We've all had a chance to see the agenda. If someone would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Someone?
Second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Carl Hammerstrom, 33, Middle Island, Point. Just like to remind you that some of you have your backs to us and if you could speak out since we don't have any amplification, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Will do, Carl. Anyone else for a public comment? Okay, if not, I want to move on to the board action items. You should have in front of you a copy of the latest contract proposal and I need a, before you begin discussion, I need a motion to approve this and then we'll have discussion. Someone?
Second.
Okay. So, does anyone have any questions about the contract?
I do not.
Okay. Then I need a motion to approve the contract?
Someone?
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay. The Peterwhite Library Board Trustees will present this as approved to the township. The second item is the ballot language and I ask that you take a look at that and then I will ask for a motion to approve this. I don't have any.
Someone?
Is there any discussion on this? Well, we need a second.
Yeah.
Okay. And discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the language for the ballot proposal renewal? Say aye.
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 Okay. So, we're back, we're moving right along here. We're back to public comment. No public comment. Then we will just wait.
Okay, welcome everybody to a special meeting of the market township board. Today's Tuesday, June 28th. I'm calling a meeting to order. Role call.
Trustee Trusta has excused an assent. Trustee Marks.
Present.
Trustee LaRue.
Present.
Trustee Ponto.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Perpetarator here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Staff present, his manager Gerard and civil councilor Roger Zapop and our township advisory committee member, our Gene Kennedy and Mary Davis are both here in the crowd.
Thanks, Randy. Any public comment? Anyone who wishes to?
We have to get the agenda first.
Oh, I looked at that wrong, I'm sorry. Yes, thanks. Approval of the agenda then.
I move to approve the agenda.
Support it.
Motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. I think these are what Dennis used to do. Public comment now. Anybody wish to address the board? Nobody? We're good. Okay. Board member comment? Anybody have anything? Yes, Randy?
Okay. The library committee approved the contract and the ballot language. Now, we cannot approve the ballot language tonight because that's not part of our special meeting agenda. But if indeed the contract gets approved tonight, I will, if you'll ask me to put it on the next agenda, I will do that, okay? And I assumed you would. Contract is approved tonight. That's all.
Okay. And do we have enough copies? Would you broadly for, of the ballot language? I guess we don't have to even talk about that.
We can't talk about it anyway.
As long as we have one, we're fine. That's fine.
Okay. Yeah, you can just have a reading.
Yeah, I was thinking we were going to approve it.
Diane, I hear we've got all for the specials.
Yeah, we have. Okay. Any other board member comment? Anything? Well, I'll just make one small statement. I want to thank the Mindy Journal for the coverage and Town Six. We've had PD6 here, I think, a couple times. We've got a reporter here pretty much every meeting, which is great. We really appreciate it. I just want to remind, the Mindy Journal's had a couple of editorials lately urging us on and I just want to remind them that legal has tied us up a couple meetings. So, it's not for lack of desire that we didn't move the contract forward, but that was kind of a stall for us. So, that's all. I just want everybody to know that it's not because this board or the library board have not been aware that this has taken a while. It's just that it kind of got put back at least a month, I think. So, that being said, our unfinished business is considered a library contract. Um, yes, Randy.
I'm here.
Sorry, I was kidding, Randy. There you go.
I make a motion to accept the contract for discussion.
Okay. Have no air, second?
Second.
Motion in support. Any comments? Dan, did you have anything else you wanted to? Pete, any comments?
The comment I want to know is if it's an information or misunderstanding as far as what we're doing and why we did this. It all started out when the contract was like 23 years old. You should look at it. I brought up, not knowing a lot of the legal facts of this, now I stand a little bit more thanks to Dr. Hammerstrom, he kept me updated on some of this stuff. Well, when I looked at the contract and always looked at it 23 years ago, okay, our township is growing. Why can't we just pay the same plus and then cap? That's my simple reason why we do it, because it's bits of everything else. The penal codes, we're always struggling with the support of our sheriff department. We were 60 hours with 80 hours, not knowing what the penal system means. I said, "Well, why can't we use that money to help subsidize?" Because 80 hours or 60 hours before for the growing township, infrastructure and everything else, every time somebody gets caught at Walmart, it's two hours. So, in holidays, it's 16 hours. Sometimes you get eight people, it's 16 hours out of 60. And so, I said, "Okay, how can we help subsidize that and give more coverage to residents?" Because a lot of things, accidents, you know, with the fastest movement township up here, most accidents, the onset of cell phones, you know, all the other things that complicate what's going on up here is that the meth, the break-ins and that. We need coverage in our townships to take care of that. And that's where I was thinking. I wasn't thinking of, you know, like I said, Dr. Hammerstrom sent me file after file. I had to stand a little bit more that you can't just change it now. It can be changed, but it takes a process to do that. And I didn't understand that. So, thank you, Dr. Hammerstrom, for helping me out with that. But, and I guess I felt that we got jumped on too quick, you know what I mean? Like drawing the troops and making the county trying to bury the library and that wasn't the fact. It was basically just for information purposes, you know? That's what I wanted to know, that's what he wanted. I asked Dr. Hammerstrom, "Don't we look at your insurance policy or housing more than maybe 23 years?" And that's why I think we should do that. I think it's our job to do that, to look at everything and anything, but get the facts. And that's what we're searching for, but it didn't always come out that way. Township has always in the past supported the library, but now there's some questions out there and then we just wanted answers for it. That's the question that's right on. I just want to clear it up that we weren't against the library, you know? I just want to clear that up.
Someone?
You know, if you don't know, you know, let's say, you could take the penal fines. If we had another library in our district, you could do that, you could give it to them. But, I mean, it's, we don't have that. We know, we just have to worry about the library, sustain and all those things that they got going there, so.
You're good. Anybody else?
Roger, do you have any comments on this at all?
I have a couple. Just for clarification, when the statement was made, it's tied up in legal and it wasn't sitting on my desk. And I did just, I did just speak with the library's attorney also at 5:15, just to confirm receipt and review and essentially approval of the most recent changes. Only one change of significance since the full board has seen this last, and that's because of how long it has taken. Recall, we had a provision that indicated that we would have to adjust the millage rate based upon the 2016 heavily computation. That has now been issued, so we know what that is. So, I changed that this morning to reflect that the, there is a zero change from 2016. So, essentially, it is going to be the same millage rate, .9061, that will be on the ballot. And I do have that, the amount of income that that will generate in the first year if it's approved at the ballot. I've gotten that from the assessor and from the clerk. So, that is the only change of substance. So, there's really nothing new in the proposed contract, other than that it clarifies exactly what the rate will be, rather than saying we'll have to estimate it once the new one comes out. So, I would entertain any questions that the board might have, but essentially, this is the same version that you have seen and looked at and debated at length in the past, with that minor exception and with two minor grammatical revisions also that neither of the attorneys had caught until yesterday on.
Well, color was removed.
Right. For example, paragraph two, because two A was changed, we just deleted the "this agreement" language, so it goes grammatically more correct fashion. We took out an "and" where there were two "ands." But those were not of substance, they were, to make it look a bit more professional.
Okay. Did you have any comments to, Randy?
Oh, no. Yeah, I'm, 3D is the one we talked about last time on the language and that's the one that you upgraded that.
That is correct and that's, that's the one that we put in at the library's request, both the fact that it originated as a one-mill millage and then is reduced each year by the heavily amendment and included the actual millage rate, because it had been back and forth on just how that was worded. So, in order to, and I think that is going to be beneficial for future boards on both sides to just create a little bit more history of how that number, what was the genesis of that number. So, it's in there both ways indicating that it started out back really well in 1993 essentially as a one-mill millage. It's been reduced each year under the heavily amendment and the current amount of that that will be placed on the ballot is the .9061. So, it's spelled out in two different fashions in there that should help eliminate future guesswork or confusion on the part of either board when this gets reviewed, whether that's in two years or something subsequent to that. Or sir, in that.
Anything else? Yes, Dan?
I'm also assuming, I noticed that there's changes in 4B that reflects the second part of the letter between the library attorney. That's different, well, and I should say it's different than the one that we received at the last 4B.
The only thing that would be different than that from the last black line version is the removal of the word "and," I believe, where there were two "ands" in that. This is, this 4B is the section that basically says that the agreement will terminate on December 31 of any given year. But recall, we had some extensive discussion as far as the old contract provided that it could be terminated with six months advance notice, but that could be terminated at any time. We talked about at the library attorney's request that that be changed to December 31 and there are pluses and minuses to that, but it's my legal opinion that I think the pluses of that outweigh the minuses, that it really simplifies if the contract is terminated, both from the library's perspective and the township board's perspective, that millage that's levied in December of any given year doesn't get collected and paid out until May 1 of the subsequent year. So, if it's going to terminate, let's say in September and the money's already been paid for the full amount for a full year of service, we'd have to come up with some type of a means of prorating on refund or of altering the service date or something along those lines. And this essentially eliminates that and simplifies it. But there's really nothing different in there, other than the one grammatic revision from the last version. Well, there have been probably half a dozen different versions of that.
That could be.
But the most recent one that was given to the board at the last meeting would have been this one with a couple "ands."
Okay. It looks like we have some public that has a question.
Just a quick question, wanted to verify the millage rate, it's .9061 you said? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Dan?
Nope.
You're good? Randy, anything?
I have no comment.
Mr. Marks?
No.
Okay. Okay. I don't have any more comments either. I think I want to commend Roger for all of his hard work and research and phone calls back and forth to the library attorney and he's done an awesome job of putting this all together, so thanks for that. So, we have a motion in support. No more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. This is accepted.
The motion was to consider, is it to adopt?
Adopt.
Is that what, is that what your revision is to the motion?
Well, it was to consider the contract.
Consider the contract, which was, I assume, kind of adopt, but I'll change to adopt.
You okay with that? Give it a second, I really.
Yeah.
Do we need to re-vote?
Yes, you do.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Role call, hold.
Certainly.
Trustee Ponto?
Yes.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Marks?
No.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Perpetarator is yes and Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries five, the yeses, one no and one assent.
Okay.
I feel for your agenda, that we have a work study somewhere in the next couple of years to take care of some of the questions that were never answered.
Some of the strange points that were brought up.
Because we should take a look at that and answer that fact and all of it. That was never done in the committee.
Yes, okay.
And because of the time, we have a lot of time to do much more than what we have with the contract and we have a work study and to answer some questions, give more advice and that sort of, and draw our questions.
Sure. We can, so.
Not just we?
No. No, I was just thinking, a clarification from Roger. Now, where are we standing? We have to put this on the ballot. If the public goes with it and votes to support it, the millage will be levied in December to cover 2017, 2018. And then the contract will come up for renewal. If there are no issues, it will renew automatically. And then in 18 and 19, that's the subsequent two years. So, it would have to be looked at for 20.
Just for clarification, your ballot will provide that it's going to be a levy for years 16 and 17, but it will provide service for years 17 and 18 because of that lag in the collection. And that's also addressed in your agreement. But that's, that's an important point that we spent some time differentiating between that the year of the levy is actually, if it passes on the November ballot, the November 8th of 2016 ballot, then that will be placed for levy in December of 2016, will be collected throughout the ensuing months and will be paid to Peterwhite Public Library on or about May 1 of 2017 for service through December 31, 2017. The same thing will happen at the end of 2017 for service through 2018. So, the year of levy does not match the year of service.
And then it comes up for automatic renewal in 18 for the following year and will happen automatically unless that board at that time.
Either party.
Yeah. Whichever one is in power, whoever's sitting in the seat. Correct?
Correct.
And then it expires?
For 17, 18, 19, 20.
That'll be two years. For service, 17, 18 for the first two years of service, 19 and 20.
December 31.
That's correct.
So, we're all on the same page. Yes, Dan?
Just because I haven't seen the ballot language, but is it for four years or is it for two years?
For levy in years 16 and 17.
So, in two years, we don't have another move.
That is correct.
You'll be, you'll be addressing this and all the question in your next, your next court meeting.
Yep. Okay, it's time to go. Let her come.
Yeah, well, now, what'll happen now is now that the contract's been approved, I have a request from the library, I have the resolution in ballot language that will be placed on the agenda next meeting and if the board approves that, it will then go to the county clerk and then it'll be on the November ballot, so.
One other little critical factor from the library's standpoint is the language of any contract has to be approved at the state level as well. So, that's, so that's not the township board's wing per se, but that, and those routinely are approved once the parties have sat down and negotiated them, but that's a step that does have to be complied with as well.
Okay, we don't have any new business. Any more public comment? Go ahead, Carl, I'm sorry. Don't mind me.
Carl Hammerstrom, 33, Middle Island, Point, Township. I and a large number of township citizens are relieved this wearisome process is coming to an end. We wish to let Peterwhite Public Library know that we are very satisfied with the service that we have and that has been demonstrated in a township-wide survey that was done a couple of years ago. We have not been happy with this process and we think it's been unnecessary. You are two independent entities that both have fiscal responsibilities that are great, but there was no reason to have to go through this process of looking like your enemies. I would hope that in the future, when it comes time to consider renewing, that a meeting such as this can occur without the necessity of, of boards that have a synchronous meeting schedule have difficulty in finding a way to get their messages across. The people of the township, not the county board, the township board, it's the people of the township who are paying a levy. It's their money. And those of us who vote for the levy are voting to have library services available to all of our citizens, not just to those who are fortunate enough to have money that they might be able to purchase their own non-resident library card. As a democracy, this is how we operate, so that those who may have more helps to support those who may have less. You've heard from Mrs. Davis as an educator, how important access to library services are to our children. Access to the library service right now, particularly to learn how to use a computer, to learn how to write a job application, to learn where they might search for an alternative job, having them downsized or whatever you want to call it. Libraries are very important and they are not replaced by a Kindle or an iPad. We, your citizens, strongly support this and we have through all of the previous millage levies and I am confident that it will continue. Thank you.
Since the supervisor stepped out, can you, any other public comment? Can you step up, Mary?
Mary Davis, 3 Northwoods Lane. You know, I've been a longtime advocate for literacy and I thank you for arriving at this point where we can get the contract and now we can move on to the ballot. And I just wanted to say that I was reflecting on my mother. When she was 87 years old, she said, "Do you know, I had a good education and I had library services?" Because the people that came before me made judgments and decisions that allowed the education system and the library services to exist. So, I just want to say that, you know, the things that we're doing today, they're for us today and for us, our children today, but they're also for the children of tomorrow. So, you know, the good services that we've had that have allowed us to reach the pinnacles of job success and good family life were based a lot on opinions that other people made and choices that they made for paying taxes to support services like education and libraries. So, I just wanted to remind everyone about that and to thank you for thinking about the children and the children in the future.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else wish to add? Any additional comments from the board? Yes, Dan?
I just, I just want to comment that it may seem like we really didn't change the original contract from 1992, but I think if we do look at the original contract of 1992, which I think was five paragraphs and half a page long, I think we have a much more concise contract here. And again, I also would like to thank Roger for all of his hard work and creating this.
Thanks. Bernie?
I echo Danny's comment. I was on the board in '93 when we did this. Unknown to a lot of us, we moved into the territory, none of us, we knew about it and that, and we did it, and that, and we got it done, over with it. It went on for 23 years and all of a sudden, we get 23 years out, we start looking at the contract. Maybe we should look at it further and refine it than that and that's when we got our attorneys involved with it. Roger did an excellent job in bringing us along as to what we should or should not have in it and that. And I think it's going to serve not only the township board, but the library into the future and that. And I'll be very honest with you, we have no idea what's going to happen in the future with the boards. Things could change drastically financially. We have no idea what's going to happen here, so. And as Mr. Hammerstrom said, the actual payment is from the actual citizens on the levy and that. It gets to a point, if we have too many things going on, I get a little concerned. I'm getting a little concerned with the millage that'll come on in November, especially with the 30% coming from board lighting power on the October billing, what that's going to do with a lot of stuff. It may have no effect, it may have a lot of effect, we don't know. So, we have to play it by year and a half. And I have no idea at this point in time, if we can put it out there and they can do what they want with it, then we have to run with what we give us in that, so. But it's been a long process. As is indicated, probably a month and a half ago, we probably could have had this wrapped up with the. could have had this wrapped up with the, how do I put this politely, that the lawyers got involved, and that, they kind of extended things down the line.
Lawyer.
I'll tell you, the lawyer, the lawyer got involved. But once you get to the legal end of it, they look at it a little bit different than we as individuals do, so it created some special things that we had to look at, so. Overall, I think we got something now to work with, and that, and we're going to see what's going to happen in four years down the line, and maybe something that, yes, we got it, once we sat down, looked through everything, and move forward on it. Who knows? That's all.
Thanks, Mary. Randy, anything?
The only thing I'm going to say, and I'm happy that that's resolved, so the citizens told me they got tired of reading about this, and they're happy to get this over, and hopefully we'll, at the next meeting, July 5, we'll have an agenda item with the resolution and the ballot language to put the places on the ballot for November. With that election, your last day to register for August is July 5 at 4:00. And since this is probably going to be a highly viewed meeting, we had some folks that came in on the presidential primary that did not vote in the last two general elections, and they were purged from the system. So if you have not voted in the last two general elections, which is the presidential in the midterm, which is four years, you have to come in and re-register to vote, or you'll show up, and you will not be eligible to vote. So if you've got any questions, please call the township office and check. But make sure you're eligible to vote, because the state, like I said, if you don't vote in four years, the state will purge you from the system, so. So I wouldn't, it's not, I don't like citizens showing up, and unfortunately, they can't know, there's nothing I can do about it, so. That's all I have.
Tom, anything?
One thing we're just saying, welcome to new director, Andy. We go down there, welcome to Marquette. You'll enjoy it. And it's not always like this. We had a lawyer who was blaming on, and he found out, Andy says, 23 years old, he was there, so it's his fault. But it is, it's too bad we didn't got this meeting between the boards about earlier, a year ago, because what happens is, when we start asking questions, that was just because we didn't have the information, you know. And so, like I said, I can, Dr. Hammerstone helped me a lot through a lot of these things, and I appreciate that, but somebody should have said, instead of charging the township that were trying to close us, said, "What are your questions?" That's what you should have done. Welcome in.
Thank you. Yep, I'm glad this is settled. Contrary to popular belief, we do look at contracts more frequently than 23 years. It is our charge. That's what we're supposed to do. And like Pete said, you know, you wouldn't go 23 years without looking at your mortgage or whatever, whatever other contract you have with the bank or something. And that's all this was. Nobody was trying to close the library, not by any means. It wasn't anything, no vendetta, no, no problems, no reason. We just needed to get it done. And we started talking about it, and the fervor came. So, that's all right. The weather did, I guess, all of us, but...
Dr. Hammerstone brought up, well, to children learning both computers, and, well, there's a lot of senior citizens that should be learning more of those, and they can also can go there, too. It's not anything about the children.
Right. So it would behoove us to have a meeting at least once a year, I think. I suggested that to our previous supervisor, that we get together with, you know, maps and the library and a bunch of different committees once a year, and just kind of see what's going on in your world. And, you know, we're all busy, and it's overlooked, so hopefully, going forward, we can do that more, and be more aware of our partners. Who do we rub our shoulders with? We need to, you know, we're all connected, as a county especially. We need to pay more attention to that umbrella. Where do we all fit into this? And this isn't just Marquette Township. It's not just City. It's not just Chalk. It's how does this all fit together? Because we are interconnected, but we like it or not. So that's my soapbox, is what I see happening going forward. So you still have your meeting open?
Yes.
Any final comments, or?
Any comments?
I just wanted to thank you all for helping here.
Sure. Appreciate you coming down.
It's been a long call, and, yeah, thank you. And I think this was probably long overdue.
Okay. So if we're good, we can have the motion for our...
Time to move to a adjournment?
Okay. Call the same...
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those...
I agree.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.